Okay, if I could have everyone's attention, please. I think everybody knows that if you want to speak on a particular piece of legislation, you need to sign up. Anybody forget to do that? We good? Okay. Ms. Whitby, if you call a roll.
Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Harris.
Here.
Height.
Here.
Witcher.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I invite you to stand for the prayer and pledge to be led by Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember Robinson.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for another opportunity to carry on business here in the city of North Little Rock. We give you praise and glory and honor. We ask that you be with us tonight and that you will lead and guide us in our decision-making and that we will make good choices. These are the blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Baxter.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Communications, anybody want to pull one, two, three, or four?
One and two.
Pull one and two. Let's just do them all. Okay. Number one.
Title. Or do you want it read?
Title.
Just for information purposes, if you can just...
Communication one, open house, public hearing notice and letter from Arkansas Department of Transportation regarding the location and design to present and discuss the environmental assessment and proposed design plans to improve I-30 in Little Rock and North Little Rock between I-40 and I-530, including the Arkansas River Bridge, Thursday, July 12, 2018, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Wyndham Riverfront Silver City Rooms. To Riverfront Place, North Little Rock.
Moved excepting file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Number two.
Just by title, and if we could have Jason Carter come up and just give us a brief summary.
Okay. You want to read it?
See Jason Carter, Attorney at Law, memorandum regarding the Risk Management Committee Quarterly Report, Q1 FY18.
Counsel.
This is just a summary of all the activities of the Risk Management Committee in the first quarter. I think we had a diverse set of activities, although the money changing hands wasn't as much as we've seen in the past. I think the transactions that the Risk Management Committee entered into were very targeted to specific risk areas, both in peak power times and in capacity purchases and managing financial transmission rights between our transactional point at Arkansas Hub and our interest in Plum Point Power Plant. But the Risk Management Committee seems to be functioning well. We're, you know, it's doing a good job of meeting, analyzing the risk and the volatility and just looking at those places where we can best manage that risk, keep our prices stable over the long haul. So I'll just leave my summary at that, subject to any questions that you might have.
Any questions? About a motion? We got one?
Moved excepting file.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Number three.
Central Arkansas Water, 2017 Popular Annual Financial Report.
How about a motion?
Who accept and file?
Second.
Question?
No, Mayor, I just wanted you to know we have someone from Central Arkansas Water here.
They are here if there are any questions.
If there are any questions, yes.
So if there's no questions, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you guys for being here from CAW. We appreciate it. Number four.
Number four by title.
Sure.
It's a memorandum from Karen Scott, who is the Finance Director but also Chairman of the Energy Risk Management Committee, and this is the Energy Cost Recovery Rider for the month of July, and it's .0001 positive.
Move accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's go right on into public comment. We have seven people signed up to talk on oh-1859, and we have a couple of one, two, three on oh-1860. So let's take the 59s first. Remember that if the person before you said exactly what you're going to say, a good quick answer is just like what he said, and you can sit down. But I'm teasing, of course. Feel free to speak all you want to. Maximum of three minutes, okay? Three minutes each. First person is Douglas Braswell.
Thank you. Again, my name is Douglas Braswell. I'm the owner of Braswell &amp; Son Pond Brokers, and I'm super excited about the opportunity to have a business here in North Little Rock. We've been in business in Little Rock, Central Arkansas, for almost 40 years now, and I've been with the family business for 25 years. During that time, we have worked hard to transition ourselves from kind of whatever the stereotype you may have about a business in our industry. And today, we're primarily known throughout the area for four main reasons. The first being that we're a place to go to meet short-term financial needs. We've helped folks from $100 for a single mom to help her pay an unexpectedly high utility bill, to up to $30,000 for a businessman to meet some unexpected expenses. The second thing is a place to go for quality goods at great prices. So approximately 85% of our sales come from selling jewelry and vintage luxury handbags. We are one of the top two sellers of vintage Louis Vuitton handbags in the state. And in order to do that, we have to have a beautiful store with an inviting atmosphere. So most guests often confuse our store with a jewelry store, which is necessary in order to sell that kind of merchandise. We also don't do any dealing at all in firearms, which helps to create the kind of atmosphere that's conducive to those type of transactions. So the third thing is a provider of great jobs. We've been recognized at Braswell &amp; Son by Arkansas Business as the best place to work in the state for the past three years. So excellent jobs with good pay and benefits is something that I'm very proud of. And lastly, community service. Braswell &amp; Son has an active partnership with a number of nonprofits in the communities in which we operate, the Call of Plaski County being one, the Faulkner County Boys and Girls Club, and Exodus Project are three of those. In addition, in the past, as far as North Little Rock is concerned, we've also donated musical instruments to Lakewood Middle School. We even allow each one of our employees to volunteer one day per quarter and receive full pay for their time spent volunteering. In 2017, we were recognized by the National Pond Brokers Association with its Outstanding Community Service Award. So it's my hope that you can see and that you understand that we're nothing like the negative stereotypes, but that we're a unique business with a long history of providing outstanding service, great jobs, while being an active and positive contributor to the community. And I would appreciate your support of our application.
Thank you, sir. Melanie Hoggard.
My name is Melanie Hoggard. I live in North Little Rock. I own two businesses in North Little Rock, and I am here in support of Braswell &amp; Son. I think a lot of people who may be opposed to them to coming to North Little Rock are just not familiar with their business. It's not at all what I consider an old-school pawn shop and the stereotypical. It does provide all those needs that Douglas just spoke of, but I am very familiar with their business. And if you've never visited one, you really should check it out. They're extremely high-end. They're extremely professional. They truly care about their employees. And a lot of people in our community need that. They need a place to go for that short-term financial need. And a lot of people may not admit it, even in this room, that have needed it, and they don't have another place to go. To have an opportunity, to be able to go to such a professional, and to someone that treats them with such respect and dignity and privacy, is a huge win for our community and for our residents, aside from providing a great shopping venue for others as well. I would be happy to have either one of my businesses in the same shopping center with them, with their employees, with their customer base. I see that they would be nothing but an asset to our city and would really appreciate your support as well.
Thanks, Melanie. Greg Mueller.
Greg Mueller, I work with the Ashley Group. We'll be the landlord for Braswell &amp; Sons at this location, at Indian Hills Shopping Center. And I would encourage you two to vote for it. We, I would say that we don't lease to another prototypical pawn shop in any of our other 20-some shopping centers. But we took a long, hard look at Braswell, and we like the way they operate their business, you know, the way they display their goods, the outside appearance of their store. We feel like it will add to the shopping center. We certainly wouldn't want to put somebody up there that would be a negative for the shopping center. They are at the entrance, at one of the entrances to the center. We also have kind of looked in the way they conduct their business. We feel like they've, you know, they're very above board. And so with that being said, we would encourage you to vote for it as well. We've been kind of through a long process. We do have it written in their lease that they will not display any outside merchandise, so there won't be anything sitting outside around the store like you see at a lot of centers, or like a lot of pawn shops, and that they will not sell guns. It's written right in their lease, you know? So we felt like those were some things that we didn't want to happen at the center. And so we've included that in their lease. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brent West.
My name is Brent West. I'm with Braswell &amp; Son. I'm actually our Director of Operations, and we look forward to being your new neighbor. Hopefully, you'll vote for us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jesse Harris.
My name is Jesse Harris. I'm a customer for Braswell. I've been with them for maybe like five years now, and they treat me with much more respect. They know me by name every time I go in either one of their stores. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Feel like I'm in the minority tonight, but my name's Hank Klein. I've appeared before you before, talking about payday lenders and the high interest rates they charge. Pawn shops also charge high interest rates. Yes, they make loans, small loans, but they charge 17% interest plus a 25% per month interest. And when you look at the annual percentage rate that they disclosed on their truth in lending statement, it's 317%. That's predatory to me. That's just like the payday lenders we used to have here in town. We got rid of those, and I don't think we ought to add another pawn shop to North Little Rock. I've been shopping for 30 years at Kroger's in that shopping center, seen businesses thrive there. And I'm worried about, also worried about Wards Jewelers, that just took an old bank building, converted it, and moved into it. And I'm wondering about the jewelry they sell versus the jewelry they sell at a much lower price because it's used jewelry and the viability of two jewelry stores in the same shopping center. But I'm mostly concerned about the interest rate and how that hurts people.
Thank you, Hank. Bill Sal.
You know, I've lived in North Little Rock for 55 years now. I've raised my family in North Little Rock. I've been involved in this community for many, many years. My business is in North Little Rock, as it has been for many, many years. So I would say that I have a very vested interest in the future and success of this city. So from a business perspective, anytime I see any business come into our city, the first question I ask is, does it bring value to our community? Not only does it bring value, does it bring jobs? In this case, I know Douglas, I know how they do business, and the answer is absolutely yes. His business will bring value and jobs to our community, and I would encourage you to support his effort in bringing his business to North Little Rock.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I see none other on oh-1859. Let's go to oh-1860, Jimmy Art.
I have no quarrels with you passing what you're going to pass for Mr. Penny tonight. I do have quarrels that you're probably going to run it through and not give the people an opportunity that need to speak on this, an opportunity to come down to the next council meeting, the next two council meetings. I ask you, if you want to run it to the second reading and hold it, it would be great, or if you want to hold it to next time and give people a chance. There is one lady here tonight that has questions, but she did not sign up. But I understand there's some wells on the property, you know, you pull water out of. Are they going to fill those wells or leave them open or what? Then there's some questions concerning the drainage problems, which is serious, could be serious. And then there's questions about the zero tolerance. And I know I'm not supposed to ask council members' questions, but Mr. Taylor is the only one that can answer this that I know of sitting up there. If it's zero tolerance, they can build right up on the line. What if you want to put a privacy wood fence, and you want the outside of your fence boards to be on the outside of your property? How are they going to be able to do it if it's zero tolerance? Do they get over a few inches or at least a few feet? And I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but it sure would be nice if Councilmember Taylor would intervene and answer. Have a good day.
Thank you very much. Kathy Montgomery.
He mentioned the zero lot line and the 700 square foot for the dwellings that can be there. It seemed a little antiquated nowadays to think of having a 700-square-foot home. We live right behind where this property is going to be located. There's two entrances to this property as proposed, on Division Street and on West 52nd Street. West 52nd Street will be right behind my house and others that live on Cody Place. We were wanting to see if there could be some kind of buffer put up, like a fence, a wooden fence, along that street. We moved up there 22 years ago because it was quiet. We have invested in this property, and we have nice property. And we are worried about the noise, worried about the trash. Another thing, the parking that they have on Division Street, you can park on either side of the street. The other day, I came out of my cul-de-sac and came down the street, and they were doing some kind of work, putting in some kind of cable or something. And they had people parked on the street, on both sides. I could barely get my truck through there. If people park on both sides of the street there, and you have to have emergency vehicles come up there for whatever reason, they couldn't make it. Either fire or EMS, anyone. And we would like for you all to look into having one side of the street where you don't park. When they first came out there, Mr. Penny's property, they cleared the property without a permit. They got a permit, and they ended up burning their trash on there. That's fine. But they didn't put, I believe it's called a silt fence, fence around the property, and it's to prevent erosion. There was not one there. There's still not one there. And like I said, it's right behind my house. We can see people coming and going or whatever all the time. I would like for you all to at least address some of the problems. The noise level, the access to the property, the parking on Division Street, and is there a checklist of what all you can or cannot do when you're developing property?
Sure.
Is there?
Yeah. Did you go to the planning meeting?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So most of those questions should have been answered at planning.
I didn't ask about a checklist.
Okay. Our planning director is here, and he'd be more than happy to visit with you. I'm looking for him right now. Mr. Taylor?
Sometimes, Mayor, a lot of those questions are actually invented out during the subdivision process. So if you're not, if you don't come for the full planning meeting, sometimes they talk about it beforehand, so.
Well, when Sean sticks his head in here, we'll get you to, you can go out in the hall, and he can tell you, and if he can get your address, or you can go see him tomorrow. I assure you that the safety issues as far as emergency vehicles will be addressed by our traffic engineers. So, you know, we've got an eye on everything.
Well, we have a cancer person that lives in our area up there that we're worried that she wouldn't be able to get to the hospital. We also have a young girl that lives in our neighborhood that has diabetes and epilepsy.
Yeah, we're not going to let that happen.
And they couldn't get through.
Yeah. Rest assured. The, Mr. Spencer's right behind you. If y'all want to step out there and you ask him his questions, he can get you all the information you need.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Patrick Henry Hayes, Mr. Mayor, welcome to the podium and welcome to your old stomping grounds.
Mr. Mayor, council members, it's certainly glad to be, I'm certainly glad to be here and because of, not only to refresh, you know, friendships and say hello to, you know, faces I hadn't had a chance to see in a while, but also because this literally is a project that's doing what I tried to do for the 24 years that I was here. I used to phrase it, "heads in beds" is the way I used to say, that that's one of the goals that we had, and particularly one of the challenges, one of the greater challenges that North Little Rock has because of its being pretty much hemmed in by other jurisdictions. And I'm equally happy to be able to be a part of a project that both Butch Penny and J.M. Kreutz, who are both here, and they're going to take just a minute, so I won't take, you know, much of my time, except to say that this is a terrific project. It's going to provide quality living. 700 square feet, and I think 1,100, 1,200 square feet is where the minimum starts coming in. These are going to be terrific homes. It's going to add a lot to the neighborhood, and it's going to provide affordable places for people to live in North Little Rock, which is a goal that we all have, you know, particularly in light of the census coming up in the next couple of years, I believe. And so those are strong reasons that, you know, that I know that this council, because I had a chance to serve with many of you, all of you except one, in fact, are working hard to do, and that's provide quality living. And I want to especially thank Steve Baxter, who's supportive and not here, and Ron Harris, the two council members whose word it is. We met out there with Ron and talked to Steve, and it's going to be a great project. They're going to be good neighbors, and we're going to provide places for folks to put their heads in beds. Butch, you and J.M. want to just stand up just a second and make a quick comment? I know Barbara, Butch's wife, has some packets that she'd love to pass out if that's possible. How would we do that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, that's fine. Come ahead. Butch, come to the microphone if you'd like to speak.
I'm Butch Penny. This is J.M. Kreutz. He's my partner in this project. We're both builders, and we've been old builders for here long.
Painted builders.
And both of us have done zero lot line before, and it has worked out well. We would be glad to answer any questions. If you look at the packets, we're not building any 700-square-foot houses. We're building 1,000, 1,200, up to 1,400 square feet. And most of them will have three bedrooms, and all of them have two bathrooms and a garage.
Anybody have any questions of the developer?
I, we can wait until we get to the legislation, but I'm just curious on the price of these homes.
Price of the homes. Butch, you got a clue?
It's going to be around $125,000.
Somewhere in that. Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah, in that neighborhood. Depends on the finish.
Okay. This is very professional you've done. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much. I think that concludes our public comments.
Did I keep within our three minutes? [laughter]
I would, I was really wanting, I really wanted to hammer you down. Did well, Mayor. Thank you. As I normally do with developers or any businesses that are here with paid consultants, I like to try to pull their legislation out of order. So without objection, I'm going to pull 59 and 60 out and call those right now so that our people can leave that are paying consultants to be here with them. So do I have any objections to that? If not, call 60. Ms. Whitby?
60 first.
Yeah.
Okay, 60 is, you ready?
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at the northeast corner of Division Street and West 52nd Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R1 and R3 to R0 classification by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Let's suspend the rules.
Second. A motion and a second to suspend all readings on the motion.
To suspend. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you very much. How about a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second. I have a question of Mr. Braswell. Is that okay? This is, this is 60.
Mr. Penny.
We're 60.
Oh, I thought it was 50. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sixty questions?
Oh, I have any questions, but I'll be glad to explain zero lot lines if you'd like me to.
Now, we all know what it is.
Okay.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Mayor, I'm going to stop at this point. We had called oh-1859.
That's right. I'm going to call it after this.
That's what we just called.
That's what we were making. I was to call 60 first.
Yeah. He's called, he said 59 and 60, but I want to call 60 first.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, yes.
Is that it? Motion carries?
On emergency?
On emergency.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Motion carried. Mr. Penny, J.M., y'all going to make us a beautiful neighborhood. Good deal. All right, let me call oh-1859, and then we'll have a quick recess. Mr. Mayor, let us call 59, and then y'all can, y'all can ease out, okay?
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a pawn shop in a C3 zone for certain An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a pawn shop in a C3 zone for certain real property located at 7117 John F. Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Maybe suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules. On the motion.
Ross?
Wait, point of what? Uh, are we suspending the rules or are we suspending the readings?
The readings.
Readings.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the readings.
Suspend our readings.
Suspend the readings. Okay.
Yes.
We got a motion and a second. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
Comments? Ms. Ross?
Yes, I do have some comments. Uh, this is a conditional use and one of the things on the conditional use is, you know, I wish the Braswells that this passed, you know, 40 years here in North Little Rock. But in the, in, you know, we, some people have these negative, you know, ideals about pawn shops and everything that I've seen from the Braswells has been absolutely excellent. So, one of the things that I would like to do is amend this to a special use where if, for some reason, the Braswells are no longer in business, if they wanna sell it, that it no longer reverts to, automatically goes to another pawn shop. You know, under the, you know, under the conditional use, if another pawn shop comes in within the year, it doesn't, it doesn't matter who it is. They're automatic by right can go in.
What was the reasoning? Is Sean around there, Danny?
All the conditions, everything will stay the same. I mean, no guns, selling, trading, nothing outdoor.
It seems to me there was a reason that they did that instead of a special use.
There wasn't.
Greg, do you remember? Greg Mueller? Sean, why did we do a, a conditional use on the, uh, Braswell property instead of a special use?
Right now, the zoning ordinance says pawn shops in that zone are conditional use. And so we went with that story, uh, but we can down, downgrade it to a special use, uh, if the applicant's willing to do it. But that, that was the only reason is because the zoning ordinance says, has a conditional use under that zone.
Okay. Mr. Witcher?
I'll remind you, Mayor, you did pass the Planning Commission and they had, they did discuss these issues extensively during that session, nine to zero. Uh, one of the reasons why I wanna continue on this pass, Ms. Ross, is, uh, basically what we're dealing with is, uh, is the value of economics. Uh, and when I say that, I'm talking about the leasehold interest in this property. Because there is in fact a difference and a different value for the leasehold, leasehold interest between special use, which goes away immediately, and what we're proposing. Uh, the Braswell operation is a significant operation. Uh, and basically what we're doing is saying, well, you know, we'll give you this, but if at some point down the road, you decide to sell your operation or your son takes over the operation, you're gonna have to come back and do this from us. Uh, and it, it doesn't hardly seem fair to take money out of their pocket because you are affecting the value of their business. Wouldn't you do that? Uh, it is a, is a part of the, of, if you're familiar with, uh, real estate rights, it's like a bundle of sticks. And you can take certain sticks out and it doesn't affect value. But when you, you do something like this, then you are a detriment to the value and it's, you know, it's costing them money in the long run when they get ready to sell their business, if they do.
Yes, ma'am.
Question, this is either for Sean or for legal. So if it's a special use, it cannot be passed on in the family? I, I thought that one time we had a case that we had discussed that, that it could be passed on within the family.
And it's my understanding that Braswell and Son Pawnbrokers is a legal entity, that it's not, um, um, Mr. Troy Braswell or Mr. Douglas Braswell, that it's a corporation or a LLC. I don't know, Douglas, what is it? And so even if, um, Douglas's dad retired from the business, it's still the same legal entity? So the special use would stay with that?
I, I just felt strongly this morning, I was, yeah, I was having a hard time with the conditional use, but the special use I could agree to, knowing that this, you know, the company that everybody has said that they would be perfect for this location, as opposed to if it did change, what, you know, what's gonna be there next?
Is, are you making that as a motion to amend?
That's my amendment.
Is there a second?
There you go.
Any more discussion on that?
Well, we, we do it a lot on these Broadway, um, and what it allows us to do, um, when there, when callouts are coming to these Broadway, it gives us some kind of command and control if there's a callout there one day, they're going the next. Uh, it, it affords us the opportunity to see who is gonna be the new business owner, how they're gonna conduct their business. Uh, I've, I've seen times where we've, where a callout was sold to a, um, another entity and they came for a special use and we granted it to them, but at least we had a chance to vet the new owners and see what they were about and just kinda have a discussion with them, let them know what our expectations were before we, we just, just carte blanche and gave, gave them a, uh, a, uh, a special use or conditional use. So, um, they're, they're good in, uh, in, in the essence where it, it just gives this body some kind of command and control over that situation.
The, uh, let, let's ask Mr. Braswell. Can you come up to the microphone, sir? Do you understand what the amendment is, changing from a conditional use to a special use?
Well, I do understand that there's a difference and, um, but I don't know that I have, uh, a full understanding of the ramifications in the, in the long run. I understand that, you know, we wanna be there for 40 years and we'd like to continue in that, in that way. But I don't know, I, I don't know what, what could possibly come up. And it sounds like it might be some question about our ability to, you know, whether that's transfer to my son or to reorganize or whatever it is, I would, that, that's my concern. I'm not a lawyer, I don't understand all of the ins and outs of it.
So, so the question, the, the question is, if you ever sold this business to another entity or to another individual, uh, conditional uses run with the land. They, they, if we place a conditional use on that land, it stays there, it's just there. But a special use, it, it goes with, with the owner or the entity. And if you decide, or 10 years, 15 years, you guys decide, you know what, we're out of the pawn business, we're, we're, we're moving to Alaska and we're gonna sell our business, well, we're gonna sell our business to XYZ, then they would have to come back if they wanted to do a pawn shop there. But it, but if it was a conditional use and you sold that, sold your business to XYZ Company and they wanted to have a pawn shop there, then they could have a pawn shop there.
Well, they would, I guess they'd be buying the existing, I mean, for starters, we're speculating about things that, that frankly I haven't even considered. So I'm, I just don't wanna get hemmed in. I know that sometimes when businesses sell, it's an asset sale, uh, I, I just, I'm not an attorney, I don't deal with a lot of those kinds of transactions. We wanna be there a long time. I don't, besides that, uh, you know, I'd want Mr. Ashley and Mr. Mueller to have continued success in their center if I wasn't there. But if I'm not there, I'm, I'm, I'm not as interested in what happens there, uh, from a, if, if y'all wanna put a, a restaurant there or whatever it is. So really, that's, I guess maybe more of a question for you all than, than me.
Maybe you're, maybe Greg, that's, you got a thought on that?
I hear that's kinda what I wanted to ask was.
Well, when you get, when you're getting into leases, you know, the, the question becomes, is that lease assignable or not? And, um, you know, if, um, you know, if he sells it to another entity, he has a right under our lease, you know, to assign it to another entity. But this would, this would override or negate, I guess, our, our lease, uh, in this, in this case.
Without council approval?
Right.
Right. But you, he also can't assign that lease unless you approve it. The developer approves it.
That's, that's correct. We have to consent to the assignment. But now, if he were to do a sale of, is it a corporation or LLC? An LLC. If he were to sell his LLC according to what you're saying, and, and as, as it exists, he could transfer that to another person. Uh, and this, this, um, special use permit would apply. But if he, you know, if he's doing like an asset-only sale to somebody that forms another LLC, then it goes away. You know, that, that doesn't go away in our lease. I mean, it's an assignable deal, but, you know, according to this, it would go away. And, um, you know, usually that's, as we experience it with a lot of transfer business, you know, that's, that's a preferable thing. You know, a lot of people sell, you know, form another, um, entity and just do an asset sale only is, is probably the most prevalent way of transferring assets.
Questions, Ms. Ross?
No, I, it's just a comment, it's, you know, I've received opposition calls, I've received opposition emails. And what I'm trying to do is find something, a happy medium here. And this way, they know that, all the opposition, whether they're opposed to all pawn shops or whatever, that they know the integrity of Mr. Braswell will be there. When Mr. Braswell, for some reason, ever leaves, changes companies or whatever, then we will come back and look at this, this property. I'm not trying to cause anybody any harm in their property values or anything like that, but.
If I have an accident on the way home, assuming this is approved, what, what happens?
Nothing. Nothing.
I mean, if I pass my untimely demise on the way home, what happens, uh, to the ability of the, you know, my sons or whoever to continue to operate?
Nothing. As long as it stays within your family, within that same LLC, you're fine. And your great grandchildren could do it.
Right, as long as it's in the same company, the special use attaches to that. It's not to you individually, it's to the LLC.
Let's, let's see if the amendment passes and then we'll ask you another question after that, okay?
Thank you.
I've got a motion and a second to amend from a conditional use to a special use.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yeah, I got some.
Height? No. Witcher?
No.
All right, the, the motion carried, uh, Mr. Braswell. Now, my question to you is, do you want me to hold this legislation right now and give you an opportunity to speak with your attorneys or with your developer to see if that's what you wanna do? Or do you want me to call the vote as a special call, as a special, uh, use?
I would rather, uh, that we continue versus delaying vote.
Okay, all right. All right, do we have a motion to adopt this amended?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna take a two-minute recess, so all those that are here.
Emergency clause.
Emergency, I'm sorry.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
All right, two-minute recess, those that wanna leave can, we welcome you to state. Okay, how about, uh, moving the conversation out? Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, uh, and the council, thank y'all very much.
If Sean Spencer's where he can hear, Charlie Height has a question. Sean Spencer, please come answer a question. I need Sean to answer a question for him.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm gonna reconvene this. Let's go into unfinished business. 01830?
Mayor Smith, an ordinance reclassifying certain property located east of Graham Avenue and North Little, and north of Page Mill Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R1 to R2 classification by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, granting a special use to allow the sale of topsoil in order to prepare land for row crops.
First reading.
Okay, actually, I wasn't gonna call that.
I think you were.
So, uh, un-call that. Can you do that, Ms. Whitby?
No, not now.
All right, I'm gonna hold it, I'm gonna hold it. How, how much longer do I have to?
The next meeting will be the sixth and final meeting, that it can be on the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, it seems like forever. Okay, let's go to the next one.
01854, Councilmember Robinson.
We gotta hold it.
Um, and this is one, Councilmember Height had a question for Mr. Spencer.
Well, since you told it, I'll get, I'll get the answer to my question.
Well, he came in to answer your question.
Oh.
Okay.
I'll get, I'll get the answer to my question later.
We'll get it later, okay.
New business?
R18127, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and offer an acceptance with Smart House Way LLC and to sell certain real property located along the south side of Riverfront Drive from just west of the Broadway Bridge right-of-way to Smart House Way in the city of North Little Rock.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White? Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher? R18128, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to convert Riverfront Drive between the Union Pacific Rail Bridge and Brother Paul Drive from a four-lane bidirectional principal arterial street to a two-lane bidirectional minor arterial street.
Motion? How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Robinson.
I've gotten some, several calls about this particular legislation, plus an email, uh, too, about it. And one person asked me if we could hold it, hold it and meet with the group of people regarding this. And, um, so I'm presenting it, you know.
I, I'm not gonna hold it. What, you know, we've been, and we took this over from the state in order so that we could develop that property down there. We were realizing that that huge right-of-way and everything down there was not what we needed. Uh, we needed to slow the traffic down, uh, in order to, uh, put the apartment complex, uh, get it started. Uh, the banks are requiring that, uh, this happens. And it's the last thing that we need in order for the bank to, uh, to be able to close on their loan. And the developer wants to get the dirt work this summer before the winter comes in. And, um, so that's the reason I, uh, we need to go ahead and call it, uh, tonight so that they can proceed forward with 210 apartments, is that right, Doug? 210 apartments, three stories, uh, beautiful complex, they're looking at putting a boardwalk on top of the seawall. Uh, it's gonna be, uh, be the fanciest apartment complex in, in the city for sure. Ms. Ross?
I'm for this, I just have a question because Mr. Sandlin said that it was 5,200 cars daily, is that correct?
Chris here.
Cause I have a question, just a question.
Is our, our.
This is just a trivia question, I guess.
Our count is 5,000 on that street.
Is that in both directions?
Yeah.
So is that both directions or how does that work?
Both directions.
Both directions.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Littleborn. How are you today?
I'm good.
Getting ready to test your traffic count knowledge, you ready?
Oh, okay.
So, traffic count on, uh... So, traffic count on Riverfront Fifty-two Hundred a day, east Washington is approximately, how many?
I do not know offhand. But I can tell you, I can tell you this. The traffic along Riverfront Drive varies from section to section along that drive. The largest area is between west of the Broadway Bridge through the Roundabout. And that total, it varies, it's twenty-four hundred over there near east Broadway, and then it's ten thousand from west of the Broadway Bridge, or five thousand per, roughly, per side. And generally, these are ballpark, and there are various conditions, but a single lane can, based, somewhat based upon signal configuration, can carry upwards of seventy-five hundred to even as much as nine thousand vehicles per day. So the idea of reducing it down to two lanes, the traffic's never been met on that particular facility. So there is not a traffic reason to keep four lanes.
I'm gonna ask you a hundred-thousand-dollar question, and you may not know the answer. What would you think would be our busiest two-lane street in the city?
That was my question.
It could be, it could be.
Did you say?
I don't know.
Did you ask, did you say?
It'd be downtown Main Street, probably, wouldn't it?
What about North Hills Boulevard?
That's four-lane.
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 Not all the way.
Well, not all the way, yeah.
I guess it would be Main Street.
Yeah, the very first part, yeah, Main Street's gonna be.
That probably is correct, coming off that.
Yeah.
I mean, I have all these numbers.
Oh, I know you do. I know.
If you want me to.
So, but what do you, what would you think, just ballpark, what, just, if you, to estimate Main Street traffic, what would you estimate it as? And you've probably, you've probably seen the numbers before. I know you've seen them before.
I think it's thirteen thousand for some reason.
For Main Street?
Thirteen to fifteen thousand.
So then, is, so is reasonable, is very reasonable to believe that then Riverfront could?
Yeah, I would think it's possible that Riverfront ends up being somewhat similar because we are looking at slowing it down, make it more like a boulevard.
And even, even if it was at the traffic levels of a Main Street at two lanes, it still would be okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
What can I tell the businesses that are on Riverfront Drive now how they're gonna benefit from that?
Depends on what kind of business.
I think the, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead. I love your opinion.
Well, I think, I think number one is, we're looking at narrowing it down to two lanes, and then providing parallel on-street parking along that stretch. So it's gonna, as far as businesses go, it's gonna increase parking for the downtown area for events. I think it still will be a good outlet.
For events that are held, such as Verizon?
Dicky Stevens?
Will we be charging for parking at Verizon?
It's public parking, no.
Yeah.
Pardon me? No. Hey, let me tell you, my opinion, the advantage, and I'm trying to think of who it might be on that boulevard, but this apartment complex goes in, there's two hundred and ten apartments there, that's probably gonna be four to five hundred people that are gonna live twenty-four seven within two blocks of anybody that has a business on that street. So Dicky Stevens is gonna have four to five hundred more people that can actually walk to the ballgame. The restaurants that are down in this area, they can actually, their market just grew by five hundred people. So, you know, this is all about economic development.
I agree.
It's all about economic development.
Do access to even areas in downtown Riverfront Market and Little Rock are accessible?
Mm-hmm.
Verizon, Dicky Stevens?
Absolutely.
The other question I have too, and Mayor, you and I have had a conversation about this, is that, being a bike enthusiast and at one time a head of the Bicycle-Freunded Community Committee here in North Little Rock, which Mayor Hayes at one time was a big proponent of, I just want to make sure that this apartment complex is not gonna affect the river trail in any way. Can you, can you assure me of that?
I can.
Yes.
Other than add more bikers, I can't see that would hurt.
Yeah, I mean, the plan is, you know, probably the five hundred people that are gonna live there, half of them are moving there because of the bike trail.
Well, I hope so.
You know, and they're gonna have access from their apartments to the bike trail.
Yeah. We're actually looking, now, this is a little premature, but we're actually looking at configurations when we do the restriping on Riverfront. I'm looking at options. There's gonna be room, not only to have parallel parking, but if we wanted a bike lane down through there, that could be added.
I'm gonna write that down, Chris.
I'm not for that.
I know you're not, but Chris is, you know.
Okay, I didn't say I was for it, no.
If Danny Bradley to vote for it, we'll be in good shape.
We are looking at different configurations, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion? On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen one twenty-nine, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution repealing resolution number eight-three-nine-four, which declared twenty-ten Central Airport Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to be a public nuisance and condemned it.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen one thirty, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Arkansas Army National Guard for the release of its leasehold interest and purchase of the Fisher Armory Building.
Some move?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen one thirty-one, Mayor Smith.
Please hold it.
Oh, eighteen fifty-seven, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the master street plan, ordinance number eight-six-zero-one, to remove sections of Riverfront Drive as a principal arterial street and add sections of Riverfront Drive as a minor arterial street. First reading.
Second.
A motion to suspend all readings. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency?
On the emergency. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Oh, eighteen fifty-eight, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a special use to allow a tire store in a C-three zone for certain real property located at two-three-two-four Pike Avenue in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Somebody have a motion?
Mayor, the applicant is here.
The applicant is here. You know, it can certainly die for lack of a motion, or we can vote it down. I think our legal counsel would tell us to vote it one way or another.
Move to the spending rules and place it on the second, second reading.
How about a second? On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
But, no, read it a second time.
On the second reading.
An ordinance granting a special use to allow a tire store in a C-three zone for certain real property located at two-three-two-four Pike Avenue in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
Move to the spending rules and place it on the third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting a special use to allow a tire store in a C-three zone for certain real property located at two-three-two-four Pike Avenue in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
Move for adoption? Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Height?
I can't pull it up on my, on my computer, but I'm sure that we have the normal conditions on this tire store they would have had on others, such as outside storage and limiting outside storage if any, or if none. If Sean can... They're not allowed to.
All the typical ones are there, so.
Pardon me?
All the, all the typical requirements are there, so they're allowed to have thirty tires outside, and they have to roll them in every night.
Okay.
And those thirty count as part of their inventory, so the building's pretty small, so there's not really gonna be many.
They're not allowed to change tires outside?
No. All work has to be done inside the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Comments on the motion, Ms. Ross, Ms. White?
I know that all the rules are here, and I understand that. I was wondering if the applicant could come up and ask a question, please?
Height?
What do you plan to do with the tires that are removed and you're not going to use anymore? What will happen to those tires?
Those when we move them to outside the town, to the, those column, DQ number, those, the city give me a number, and I, the company come in every two weeks, move the tires to outside the town to the.
Okay, for those two weeks, where will they be sitting?
Inside. They have a big place inside the shop.
So no?
We're not leaving, we're not leaving them outside.
No worn tires will be sitting outside?
No.
Twenty-three hundred.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Height, on the motion?
Ross?
No.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes new business?
On the emergency?
On the emergency. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes new business?
Thank you very much. Public comments section, we have one, James R. Jimmy?
Know whether to do the warm fuzzies first or do the complaints first. So we'll do the warm fuzzies first. I'd like to congratulate Diane and her new code officer on the money they brought into the city. If I'm a good guesser, I bet it's over twenty, twenty-five thousand for people. It's not getting privileged lessons. In my opinion, he's doing a great job, and I hope he keeps it up. I wish the mayor would let him have a vehicle so he can take it home. And since Code gets to take their trucks home, he would go out on calls where the police say they can't give tickets when you're going door-to-door and stuff. But maybe they'll help give him the information so they can follow up on it. Second, the ballpark again had beer selling, which is fine, but I never heard anything go to the mayor's office about them having permission to sell it. And I hope Mr. Penny will do the flood restriction stuff that he's supposed to have already done and he hasn't done yet. Hmm. Mr. Witcher, yeah, perk your ears up. Great articles in the newspaper about you, and if you'd like to comment on some of the things you've accomplished, because now everybody knows that you going to these meetings sometimes saves the city a lot of money. And I don't want to stand up here and try to explain all this stuff, I know, because the mayor will only let me have three minutes. I've still got two minutes and something left. But maybe you'd like to go home to supper, wouldn't you?
You bet.
Have a good day. See what you can do about the code officer being able to have his own vehicle and submit the calls, because the other code officers take theirs home, they will not respond to calls at night, and I'm serious.
Thank you. Chris, I need you when we adjourn. Ms. Robinson?
In Glenview, on Goodwin Circle, there's a drainage ditch, and the neighbors and different ones have complained, Mayor, for over a month or so. At first, we thought it was beavers, and I think we took care of the beavers, but now the water is still standing, and it's really ugly and murky looking. So if we can get, if Chief can get the street department to figure out what's going on, and we take care of that, I'm sure the people down there will really appreciate it, because they're kind of bothered about it. They've been complaining for quite some time.
Have you called Public Works about it?
Yes, I have.
Who'd you talk to?
Whoever asked the phone.
We check on that, Chris. You know what she's talking about? Okay. Ms. White?
I want to make a comment too about an email we got on maybe Friday, I'm not sure, from Shannon Carroll, that he was gonna be working on the weekend and visiting different businesses. And I really appreciate being notified of that. I don't know that I realized that this department worked on Saturdays as well, and if we had any, any businesses we wanted to, you know, let him know about. I just thought that was really good. Thank you.
We got great employees, and Shannon's one of them. Shannon, thanks for giving the extra mile. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any other council members have anything for the good of the order? How about a motion?
Some of them, second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Harris?
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
I'm gonna have to go home alone.